With that, let me call Roe. Uh, Councilmember Bill Lewis is the one that's missing. Councilmember Bunker. Say, President.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Shaw Allen. And Mayor Devaney is also here. I think not for a public hearing, but uh, we're gonna go ahead and say the pledge and move on, and hopefully Sonny will be here shortly.
Alright.
Alright, so with that. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. So with that, uh, first thing on the agenda is an opportunity for the citizens of the city to market their tax input on the proposed budget. So Jared, we just screw that. Oh, excuse me, before I start, uh, before you start. One of the things as we, we have taken Roe calls or actually written down people's names that out there that are participating with Zoom, uh, one of the requirements for a public hearing is to try and uh, capture how many people are there, etc. So uh, if you... Anybody that joins, we need to, we need to try to make sure we get on the list. Uh, and we may ask for a, a name if all we see is a telephone number. And Ms. Bill Lewis just joined us.
Sorry, y'all.
Okay, with that, Jared, you're on.
I have some pinnacle difficulty with the second screen here. So if you wanna, if the audience wants to resituate, you can be able to see the screen easier. Something became on the plug. So, we'll go ahead and get started tonight. We're gonna review the fiscal year 20, FY21 budget and tax rate. The budget includes four components. The general fund, the utility fund, this, a new fund that we are including in our budget this year for the special revenue fund. And this includes any restricted use revenues or expenses, such as the hotel tax, um, the court fees that are, that are collected for court security fees and the rest. And that will help us keep track of our, uh, within the budget, the expenses and revenues that have very specific use associated with them. As far as fiscal policy, we also have a grant, or sometimes called a community development fund, that's used to segregate grant-funded operations. Uh, for the purposes of the budget, we do not include, uh, those funds in the budget as they are one-off, uh, items that come in. We'll start with the general fund. This is a quick look at the budget summary. You'll notice, I'm gonna move this screen off the way. You'll notice that the general fund budget summary is currently in balance with a total revenue projected, or proposed budget for FY21 at $544,000 and total expenses at $544,000. You'll notice on this screen that there is a proposed budget and an alternate proposed budget. The reason for that is the difference in the property tax revenue amount. The revenue amount is different depending on our ability as a city to enact a new property tax, raise revenues on property taxes in the next, uh, when the budget is approved and a tax rate is adopted, we have to have four council members present in order to adopt a higher than no new revenue tax amount. And so, the $334,000 you see represented in that alternate proposed budget is the projected budget amount if that event happens. So you can see the delta is just, is close to $9,000 because of rounding, it shows about $8,000 on the screen. And we'll get into the particulars as we go forward. The next slide will explain, before we get to that one.
Yeah. Let's ask, anybody got any questions about that or comments that they wanna make?
So the proposed tax increase would create more revenue of about $8,000 for the city? Is that what you're saying?
There, there is not a tax rate increase. The question was whether the tax increase would, would create more revenue for the city. The, the, there's no rate increase. The revenue increases because property values have increased. In fact, the proposed tax rate is lower than it was last year. But even with the lower, um, tax rate, because the property value is going up, it creates more additional revenue.
Okay.
The, the state law states if you, if you're unable to pass a proposed tax rate, a different tax rate other than your known new revenue rate, your property tax rate is limited to the amount of revenue that was generated in the year prior. And so, you'll see our FY20 budget number, that, that middle column is at $334,000. And that's reflected in an alternate proposed budget as well because that rate will not increase any additional revenue.
But if you're saying that the increase in the money is only because of the values of the property has increased, then why do you need four city council members to vote on a particular concerning the property tax?
It's state law.
But you're not changing anything, you're just increasing the value of the property?
The law, the law states that to pass any additional tax collection. Revenue. You must have 67% of the council present to do that, which, out of five council members, three is 60, four is 80, you gotta get, get the four to be able to go through that. Additionally, if you, it's, the law states that if you can't make that happen, you don't really pass a new tax rate. The tax rate becomes automatically set to what they call this year.
No new revenue.
The no new never, no new revenue rate. So, the proposed budget is what we would normally have done if we had everybody around them. But, we have to be prepared to, to understand what happens if we don't get them here. The good days is we have today, uh, gotten confirmation from one of the resigned folks that they will come and, and participate. So we think we're gonna be under the proposed budget rate.
But the values of the property will go up.
Oh, yeah.
Based on the appraisal districts.
The appraisal district does that, that, we don't have any new.
Okay. Well, in new construction, do they, any, any?
Right, correct.
Reduce the tax?
I, I, the, the proposed rate is a reduction in rate from, it was, from the year prior. I think the next slide is gonna help explain some of this. So, unless there's any questions on the budget balance, I'll continue to the tax rate discussion slide. So, I'll, I'll skip ahead to slide five. So here's, here's where we're at with the proposed property tax rate. The, the FY19, the 2019 rate was .4640. The voter approval rate, which is the rate that is state, that is set by the city, or the, the state, that any tax increase that would create additional revenues more than 3.5% above the year prior would have to go to a, an election. And so, any rate above .4448 would require an election. So our, just by virtue of, of new houses and property values going up, our 2019 rate is above that voter approval rate. So we have to move the tax rate down to that rate or below. The proposed rate that city council selected was .4430. And that's projected to generate about $345,000 of revenue. The no new revenue rate is .4294, and that equates to a revenue based off of housing stock and values of $336,895. So this gives you a comparison of where the no new revenue rate is, the proposed rate, the, for our purposes, the, the ceiling rate, if you will, for a voter approval rate, and then comparison to 2019's rate.
So the total amount of money that the city brings in, in property tax for a certain year is $346,000. That's the total amount that the city receives on property tax?
The total amount that the city receives from property tax in 2019, based off the 2019 rate, was $336,895. The proposed rate, which is a, a 3% reduction, or roughly, a, a reduction in the 2019, that's going to increase the revenues, uh, property tax revenues, to $345,555.
Thank you.
Any other questions out there in internet land?
No.
I, I would just, uh, Mrs. Carlson called, and I just wish that if we were speaking with a Democrat herself or herself, if we're speaking.
Okay.
Alright, so this is Jared Anvil, City Administrator, continuing on. Um, alright, going to slide four. This, this shows a year-over-year comparison. Um, this is the same information that was on the previous budget summary slide, but shown in a, in a bar chart, uh, format. And you'll see the, in the dark blue, the 2018 actuals for revenues generated across the different categories, the different accounts. The 2019 actuals, and then the, the darker yellow amber is what the budgeted amount was in 2020. And the projected amount based off the actuals thus far in the year, looking forward, um, into, to the end of the fiscal year. And that, that projected data is based off of actuals through July 31st. And so, we'll make another update, um, on September 1st to incorporate this last month's actuals. And then the green bar, the dark green bar is the proposed budget numbers, and the light green is the alternate that equates for the property tax. Any, any questions on this slide?
Any, no questions in, in real-time internet land? Anybody out there will say anything?
All I can say is, why is the municipal court, if that includes, it is Barry Hamilton, and I'm asking about the municipal court. I, I remember times two years, like this budget, don't this budget, and $600,000 given. I may, that number may not be good because it's the maximum of the state, but where is, why is it so low?
Yeah, so this is Jared Anvil, I'll, I'll address that question, and then Mayor, I'll let you chime in if you have anything to add. The, the projected amount for 2020 is lower for a couple of reasons. The first being, um, partway through the fiscal year, we lost one of our full-time officers resigned, and there was a period of time, um, in our hiring process before we were able to bring on those additional full-time equivalents. And so, we've only recently, in the last month or so, been able to, through a part-time staffing, achieve that same level of full-time equivalent employees in our police department. The other factor is the COVID response, especially during, um, the month of April and into May, where there was reduced traffic and reduced traffic stops. Um, and that also resulted in, in lower, uh, traffic citations being, being issued. So, the number of things conspired to, to drive that projected number lower than what we had budgeted. Um, and looking forward into FY21, our budget number is lower than years prior to account for changes in traffic patterns due to the ongoing partial shutdowns and reduced commerce along State Highway 8. Mayor Devaney can add to that?
Uh, the, the only thing I'll add to that, Barry, is that, uh, the $600,000 one was back when we were having, I think we had five or six police officers at the time. Of course, we've been down for several years at, at one, and then we've been at two now for a couple of years, and COVID's been in there. But when we had one or two officers, we're talking about $100,000 is about what they generate without COVID. With COVID, we think it's down to about 80 for the future. That answer your question?
No.
Uh, Sam Clinton has a question about sales tax. How is the, uh, reduction of sales tax during these months of the pandemic reflected in the monies received, uh, proposed for this year as reflected what we have for 2021?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question, and I, I failed to point that out. That is a significant difference. So you'll see in... Yeah, so, uh, Sam Clinton had a question about the sales tax and, and why, the difference in projected numbers and the budget numbers. And so, uh, you'll see in 2018, 2019, a pretty substantial increase in, uh, sales tax revenues. Uh, we, we budgeted conservatively in, in FY20, um, and you'll see that we actually have exceeded our projection from our budget. So our sales tax is actually quite healthy, even during the COVID response, and we believe a lot of that's due to online commerce. Um, and the sales tax paid through online, online commerce and shipping and those things. The, the 2021 sales tax number is significantly lower because in, when we separated out our special revenue fund, that account for restricted use fund types, in our sales tax, 20% of our sales tax is segregated and goes specifically and only for road improvements and maintenance. And so, when we segregated out that, those funds from the rest of the budget, so we make sure that we don't accidentally spend that money on something we weren't supposed to, the, you'll see that, that sales tax number for the general fund went down. But if you consider the sales tax portion that's dedicated to the roads, which we'll get to later, it was actually, is another 18,000 on top of that 54. So we're actually budgeted for a total sales tax revenue to the city at 72,000. So, it's, it's a good question. The, the, the difference here is driven because of our, our change in our budget.
Whoever's phone's ringing, please put it on you.
Could, could you just say again about online sales? What, what do you mean by that? How does the city, city benefit from online sales and get more sales tax?
So, the question was from some, some, Sam Clinton, um, how the city benefits from online sales tax. And so, um, online commerce marketplaces have to collect sales tax locally now. And so, when, when you order something, for example, Amazon, Walmart, whatever, and you have your zip code included as your shipping address, they'll collect the required sales tax for your location. And so, as more, more people went to online shopping, more of that commerce was happening within the city, actually, instead of going to another location. And so, because people were buying more goods online, that drove our sales tax revenue up. Then we projected in our budget.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That's my stand, Sam. That's Jan.
And that, and that might not be the only reason. We also have more restaurants in town and things that, that opened up than were in place in the start of the fiscal year. So there might be other items, but the, the one that we're, we're thinking that may be contributing most to that is the development itself.
People shopping in town.
Yeah, people shopping in town, whether it's from their home or from the counties.
Okay. And I, I have a question, uh, this is Bill Blaze. What, what consists of the franchise fees?
Yeah, so, uh, Bill Blaze had a question regarding what consists in the franchise fees. So the franchise fees are a fee that's charged to, um, utility companies who use the city or either way. So the telephone and internet companies, they pay a, I believe it's a flat rate per customer fee, or close to it.
It's considered on a contract.
Okay.
With the city. The, the, the customers for Spectrum, they all pay the same fee if they're within the city. The customers for Bluebonnet, they all pay the same fee. But the Spectrum fee and the Bluebonnet fee are not necessarily exactly the same. Each one of those has a separate contract with the city that goes back years. That's kinda why it's flat. That was, well, we'll make that go up is if we get more people. More users, Spectrum, move on. Water.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one more, this is Bill Blaze. What goes into the miscellaneous general fund?
I wanted to look that up. So the question was, what, what's included in the miscellaneous general fund? And there's a number of items. Um, the one I think of at the top of my head as I look this up is, like, the credit card usage, um, fees for the, for the court. Um, when, when someone pays by credit card, there's a service charge that's, that's included in that, and that's captured in this miscellaneous revenue.
It's not permits?
Permits. Um, so a lot of these miscellaneous are pass, pass-through accounts, so, um, permit, building fees.
Copy.
Yeah, copies, legal, there's a small amount of money for illegal restitution. Um, and investment in the tax pool account, so if we gain any interest on our savings, um, that's included in there. Together, they're pretty small. Most, most of that is the permit and building fees.
But it did say it's 18, uh, 18,000, correct?
Correct. And mo, mo, some of those building permit fees, um, are retained, are revenue to the city, but most of it, majority of those funds are passed through out to the inspector. Alright, any other questions? Alright, we discussed the property tax already. And so here's the, uh, general fund expenses overview. And there'll be a couple more slides after this that'll get into specifics, but we'll, we'll touch here on the overview. So, the general fund expenses, the largest budget item for the city is payroll expenses. And so, the budget for 21 is $299,000. The operating expenses, this, these are, you know, keep the lights on, printing, materials, office supplies, um, uniforms, a bunch of other, uh, operating expenses, that's budgeted at $43,000. There's a small number of other operating expenses that are, that are minute, that are included. And then contracting, contractual services, we have budgeted $191,000 for the proposed budget, but if we incur that difference in sales tax, like we discussed, the alternate budget amount for contractual services is $172,000. You'll notice a, a new item, capital improvement transfer, that's currently budgeted at about $4,000. This is, that may change when we go forward, but for now, this is where it stands. You'll notice in years prior, there, there's zero amount. That doesn't mean we haven't been adding money to the capital improvement fund, it just hasn't been doing it after, at the end of the year with whatever remaining, uh, surplus may have come out through the, throughout the course of the year. Here, we're trying to add in the, um, specific in adding in a capital improvement transfer as part of the budget, do it on the front end and not just on the, the end of the year. Do a part, going in time to make that transfer. And the emergency fund savings, you'll see that constant, that $15,000 a year as we look to achieve our, our savings rate for our emergency fund or rainy day fund.
Any questions about expenses, general fund expenses out there in, uh, internet land? Going once, going twice, how about inside here?
Sam Clinton, so the operational expenses, that's where then the roads, the parks, and the library comes out of that?
Uh, no.
No, most, most, so the question was...
Parks is in there.
From the Sam was, the operating expenses, does the roads and parks, the, what, what's in there is advertising, um, election expenses, office supplies, postage, our property liability insurance, um, IT software requirements, or IT, software expenses, not IT, software expenses. And the park expense and the streetlights, basically keeping the place running kind of, kind of, kind of things. The roads and, and other items are included in the, uh, contractual services, because we contract them.
So the gasoline say to run the police car, is Sam Clinton asking, gasoline to run the police cars is an operational expense?
No. Yes, it's down in other contracts.
Yeah, the fuel expenses and the other contractual expenses.
Is it contractual expense? Okay. Thank you.
And we'll get to some of the, the higher expense items and the funds.
Okay.
Alright.
So here, one of the major, um, expenses that we have, that's a high priority for, for the city, is street and road maintenance and repair expenses. And we touched on this briefly, but the street maintenance and repair is partially funded by our general fund and is partially funded by our special revenue fund. The general fund being taken from all available resources that don't have any restricted use tied to those revenues. The street and road restricted from the special revenue fund, those, those are that, that 20, those revenues that are gathered for the 20% of our sales tax. And so, those have a specific use for street and road. Take that there, you'll see in that third, that far chart on the, to the far right, is the combined general fund, special revenue fund, uh, expenses towards street road maintenance. And the purpose of showing these separate is, now that we have a general fund, a special revenue fund, showing that combined, we're still budgeting to the level of repair that we had in the year prior. And double what was done in 2018. Nearly double what was done in 2018.
I have a question.
Yes.
So Catherine Glaze, so when it says 40, does that mean 40% of the budget or 40,000?
Yeah, Catherine Glaze had a question about, um, the 40. So all these numbers are in, in thousands of dollars, so it's 40,000.
Any, any questions out there in, from the Zoom audience?
I, I think I have a question, the special revenue, this is Jan Bunker, and you were talking about the special revenue fund, and I know we talked about some of the last week about the, uh, that capital fund, is that the same thing, the special revenue?
No, it's, it's separate. So the capital improvement fund... No, no, you're fine. The, the capital improvement fund is some, is included, you saw on the previous slide, we have a transfer. That's, that capital improvement fund is essentially a savings account that we have set aside to go after the capital project. And, and for the purposes of roads, the funds that are displayed on, on this screen now And for the purposes of roads, the funds that are displayed on this screen now are for the maintenance and repair, whereas the capital improvement fund would be used for a complete reconstruction or resurfacing of a road. This is mostly for pop full repairs or edge repairs and those things.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Thank you.
Yep.
Sam Clinton, a question about Southeast River Road, and the county just did that. How was that paid for?
I'll tell you about that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
We're happy to answer that question.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was out of a certain fund.
It's not a budget item.
It's not a budget item then. Okay, thank you.
All right, that all on that slide?
All right. Next slide, these are some other items of interest. The election expenses, you'll see the budget amount of $15,000 for election expenses. You'll notice the projected for 2020 is much lower than what we budgeted last year. And the reason for that is the May election was postponed to November. And so while we did incur some costs for that, most of those, most of that funding requirement, if you will, was shifted to 2021 and now pay for the November election. The parks expense, you'll see the investment that the city is making over the last few years comparing to 2018, 2019, 2020, and where we're looking at in 2021, increasing our parks expense substantially to the tune of $19,000 in 2021. Some of that, though, however, is a transfer in our accounting. We had significant funds set aside for property maintenance and repair, and those were used for mowing and maintenance of green space that was owned by the city. Out of the strategic planning process, the community-based strategic plan that the council recently approved, there was, there was an effort to, a priority to shift some of that green space from basically being non-used green area to be used for, as park land or for public use. And so some of those funds that were used for those green spaces, as those properties are transferred from, from a, you know, city maintenance to a park investment operation, that's, there's a transfer there. So that's partially the increase, but it's also a reflection of the efforts that City Council has gone to, to increase spending in this area. And then the audit fees, you'll notice it was quite high in 2018 as, as
We did two years, huh?
Yeah, two, two years at a high level. 2018 was the second year of a high level as we were getting our books straight. And since then, we've been budgeting at $20,000 a year for those audit fees. And that's, that's a requirement, state requirement, that's for the city to conduct an audit and publish financial reports every year. That's what that was.
Questions? Internal room. Questions from Zoom people?
Sam Clinton had a budget, a question about the budgeting of the money that was paid towards recently of clearing the road sides, and we had a good fund of money for that, that we paid a contractor to clear the road sides. How was that, which budget is that out of now?
So Sam Clinton had a question about where were the expenses related to the right-of-way clearing of brush and the rest? Those were included in our street and road maintenance funds.
Which is what line, oh, property management?
It was in the previous, so if you notice in 2020, the $41,000 projected actuals, that's where those funds.
Oh, that's why it's so high that past year because of all that that was done? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Next, these are the other, some other high dollar items that we have in the general fund, the attorney's fees. So the purpose of showing this slide is partially to show what our major expenses are occurring and also to show the difference between where we would take a cut if we had to enact the alternate budget instead of the proposed budget. So the attorney fees are proposed budget for 2021, it's $28,000. And that would include additional enforcement of nuisance conditions within the city as one of the strategic plan priorities and other litigation that would come up throughout the course of the year. The reduced amount would likely prevent the city from enforcing those substandard or nuisance properties to the degree that we'd be able to if we had additional property tax funds. The other item that would be cut with a reduction of property tax revenues in the alternate budget is the IT upgrading maintenance. So this funds things such as new computers, software subscription, ongoing IT support, and some of that. You'll also notice the library contract amount is provided. And then the last item on the far right is the vehicle lease. So this is setting aside funds to purchase a new police vehicle. The city is pursuing a grant to buy a new police vehicle. You've set aside $12,000 into a savings account to pay for that. In the event that we're unable to secure that grant, we're going to take those funds and use them as a down payment on a new vehicle. And the budgeted amount here is for the maintenance of that note, that lease. And so we, currently, the city has one fully functioning vehicle, one partially functioning vehicle, and one vehicle that is not currently serviceable. So this will increase, basically double our capacity from a police vehicle standpoint. Any questions on this slide?
Well, just one thing. I presume that it grant enables the city to buy a new vehicle, but it goes away?
That's, that's correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think I've identified myself even though I asked.
Thank you, Carl. All right, let's go on.
All right, now we're getting into the utility fund. This, these funds, the revenues and expenses related to the wastewater system and solid waste, and you'll notice that this budget is balanced. Total revenues at $305,000 and total expenses at $304,000. The balance at the bottom where it shows zero, that difference is accounted for rounding that's occurring within the formula, so that's why that doesn't quite add up. But it's that balance. And we can, we can go into each of these items in the following slides. Is there any questions on the budget summary? Okay. So here's the revenue. The revenue for wastewater services, this is based off of the number of customers and their usage based off the published rates in our city code. And our proposed budget based on the projections is $95,000 for wastewater services. The solid waste service revenue is at $199,000. This is based off of the contract rates and the number of customers for different types of services. And the miscellaneous utility fund, that is credit card processing and other items that may come up into your life, new wastewater packs or other service type, that's what you do. We also have a budget line item for write-offs if we're unable to collect on bills. That budget amount is essentially a negative revenue amount of $3,000 that we're accounting for, we're unable to collect. Any questions on the utility fund on here?
Frank, my question is, can you shoot out the sound, go right off, until what, so we are, we're down $3,000?
It's, it's, we're budgeting for being able to write off $3,000. So it helps us maintain a balanced budget in the event we're unable to collect. That way, we don't run into a budget deficit. It's, it's a way to plan for that potential event or number of events.
Okay, because we don't have the actual numbers, okay.
Correct. All right. Here's the utility fund expenses of the, there's a portion of the utility fund that pays for payroll and operating expenses, the utility clerks and the other items, mailing, postage, and the rest. These are based off of a, the city uses a formula to calculate that reimbursement amount. All the expenses are actually expenses out of the general fund. So this is a, this essentially reimburses the general fund for those expenses. So it's a transfer, cross fund transfer. You'll notice the solid waste expenses, these are the fees that the city pays to our service provider under the terms of the contract. And the wastewater system operations and repair, this is the total amount that the city has budgeted for the operation, operations of the wastewater treatment plant and maintenance and repair needed for the entire system, including the sewer and lift stations and the rest. That, that system is becoming more expensive over the last few years because of, well, I would consider deferred maintenance. And so we're trying to get it on top of that. And so by having this budget amount of $57,000, we hope to be able to address some of that deferred maintenance. So that way, we're, we have less expenses in corrective maintenance in the future. We've had to have emergency replacements of pumps and other outages that we're hoping to correct and get on solid footing for the future. And hopefully, those numbers will go down as we're able to get some replacement. Any questions on utility fund expenses?
Sam Clinton had a question about the wastewater expenses. Do we haul away any sludge or any kind of stuff from those evaporative ponds? Do we pay trucks to haul away anything from there?
So the question was from Sam Clinton whether we pay for trucks to haul away sludge or anything similar from the wastewater treatment plant. The answer to this point has been no. If we ever get to an event that we need to do that, we will. However, we have paid substantial amount for trucks to come and provide emergency services to lift stations. When pumps go out, we need to, we are forced to have a truck here on site pumping out the lift stations, so that way we don't have an environmental issue with those pumps not working. And that, that happened this year at the partners' lift station, and that became a significant expense. And as we had to replace two pumps and pay for trucks to be there on site for quite some time. So there are times we use trucks, but it hasn't been needed yet for the treatment plant.
Okay. If we're using trucks, something's going wrong.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay. So this gets into the special revenue fund. You'll notice that the items included in here are the sales tax for road maintenance and repair, as we discussed, the hotel taxes, which are, have a restricted use, and court restricted funds, and a small amount of other restricted funds of enforcement training. And currently, the balance is showing a small surplus, but that's, that's due to court restricted funds of a certain nature that are difficult to spend because we don't have a large corp operation. So in other municipalities that have a much larger corp system, those restricted funds are used for things like metal detectors and the rest. Where in our city, that doesn't quite apply, but those funds are still collected as part of, I don't know if it's a state requirement or, or why, but those funds are still collected on, so that's why we're not quite in a balance here. You will notice the balance, though, however, in the street repair and in the hotel tax uses, which we'll get on other slides. Any questions on the special revenue fund balance?
You'll explain the hotel tax revenue?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So thanks for the question, Sam. Explain the hotel tax revenue. So the hotel tax revenue is paid for any lodging services in the city. Most of this is through Bed and Breakfast, often advertised through Airbnb or VBRO or other similar sites. This hotel tax is collected based on, from those people who pay for a night stay and it has a given rate. And as that, since that tax has been adopted by the city, it's, the revenues are increasing as more people come into compliance with that tax amount and potentially maybe more night stays, or I don't know. But as more people come into compliance, we're generating that revenue, and that revenue has a restricted use on only tourist activities. And we'll get into some of those restricted uses on the following slide.
Sorry?
Yes.
Just a clarification. So that hotel tax is paid by Bed and Breakfast or Airbnb or whatever you want to call it in town by those B and Bs who have registered with the city. I want to make sure that we, that everyone is clear that not every single B and B is actually collecting the city portion of the tax from their debt, which is part of, part of a project I've done for a long time, and looking forward to narrowing that debt. That's what I'm looking at. And if we get into the cost of residence, he can just go up to get what they could pay you or
Correct.
Just so we should have it clear.
Thank you. Any other questions?
What is court restricted funds?
The question was, what is court restricted funds, Catherine Glaze? So the court restricted funds, these are, there's, there used to be just two or three, now there's 10 different items. And some of them have, you know, dollars and cents in them. But most of, most of it is court security fund or court technology fund. So when somebody is paying, gets a citation and they have to pay a fee, included in what they owe the city is markups for the court technology and court security fees and the rest. And so this is a reflection of how much court revenue we have, this number will fluctuate along. Any other questions? Here's the special revenue expenses. You'll notice the street repair, which we talked about earlier. And then the new items that we have for tourism, these are where we intend to spend those hotel tax restricted funds in advertising, art programs, and signage. There's specific uses that state law sets on how those funds are used, but they don't have to be geared toward tourism. These are the areas that we hope to focus on, that we will focus on in the budget to increase tourism and opportunity within the city. And then court restricted, those, those are funds spent on those technology and security and those items. And L E O S E, that's the Law Enforcement Officer Security Education Fund, is paid for state training that's required.
Sam Clinton asking about the art programs and the tourism, could you explain the $5,000 there?
So these are, the, the question was from Sam Clinton to explain the, the $5,000 under the tourism art programs. We have not developed what art programs, those are going to be, but as we go into the budget years, we wanted to make sure we budgeted for those expenses. And then at a future date, the city council will, will provide some direction on, on what specific programs those will be. But it could include live music programs, performing arts programs, fine art events. There's, there's a number of options that, that the city will, will look at this kind of funds.
Any questions up there?
The Bed and Breakfast community should be involved in how that money is spent.
Okay. The, the, the comment from, from Barry Hamilton was that the Bed and Breakfast community should be involved in the decision of how that money is from, the tourism. Okay. And that's, that concludes the slide presentation. If there's any other questions on the budget, I think that's, that's it there.
Okay, uh, we're gonna go, yeah, this is exactly what we're gonna do. We're gonna go around and give everybody an opportunity to ask or make comments now. So Catherine raised her hand. Catherine Glaze, what's your comment?
Um, I just wondered about the debt. I didn't see anything about the debt in there. Are we paying down the debt that we?
The answer is yes. Uh, the way that, that the comptroller's agreement was structured was the debt.
What?
Excuse me, the, the question was, is there's no mention of the comptroller's debt for this excessive tickets that we had back years ago. And so I want to explain that. That was from Catherine Glaze. The, the comptroller's debt is controlled, or money the old comptroller's controlled by an agreement between the city and comptroller that was signed 10 years ago or whenever it was signed. What, the, the process for what, how we get our sales tax money is, is that people pay sales taxes, the businesses turn that into the comptroller, comptroller says this is how much it's supposed to go to Martin Dale and sends us a check every month. They send, actually makes an automatic deposit to the bank and sends us a detailed list of how much they sent. As part of that agreement to pay off that debt, we signed up and they accepted a, that, that 20% of whatever we collect every month, we're supposed to get, they just keep. So on our little form, it says, hey, you got this much money, this is how much we take off for one or two percent of, of handling fee. And then they also have a line that says 20% of that, you know, we're, we're keeping and this is how much you get left over. So that's why when we get to, if you look back at the general fund revenue, revenue under sales tax, he's got to notify that this is the amount that the city gets to use, because we get to use the, the 80%, not the 20%. And so that happens, they, the money never gets to us for that. So it, it pays off, it is a zero, basically it's a 0% interest loan and it, it keep on going. Every month at, when, when Dwayne provides the financial report at the council meetings, he gives us the, the outstanding balance. He's, he's, he's got a tab running and it is currently at, I don't know if it's 360, 3?
It was a 2.
For 260? No, it's not that one 2, isn't it? He's looking.
361,000.
361,000 is what's left. And, and so if you think that about $18,000 is what we're paid this past year, I guess, maybe, yeah, maybe a little less than that. But we think 18 grand is about, about what we're paying a year. So you can take 360 and divide by 18, see how many more years we're gonna be going. And of course, as, as sales tax revenue goes up, they get paid off a little faster. But still, but it, having 0% interest loan is pretty good. You've got inflation working for you, you've got a bunch of, I mean, if, if they're not gonna forgive it, that's probably the next best thing they could do.
I have another question. On the library, we give them $18,000. Do we also pay their operating expenses like rent and utilities?
No.
But, so the rent and utilities come out of the 18,000?
So the, the, the question was, does the $18,000 that, that goes to the, the library under the contract fund operating expenses, including rent and utilities? They, they can do that because there is an operating expense. I'd have to look at the, the specific write-up of, of what, what it's been used towards, but it's, it's probable and feasible that, that it could go to those things. I'm not sure if it does, but it could.
I just wondered what the city spends? Just a straight $18,000?
Yeah, so the, the city pays a, a flat, a flat rate for, for the library service within the community.
Catherine Glaze. You get that?
That was Charles, let me ask you a question.
Yeah. We're learning on how to do this.
And this is, I'll be proud again, I have another, a follow-up on what council, what John and Barry said about the hotel motel tax, et cetera. Is it possible for the city to prepay and register with the, the providers of those services and facilitate their participation in spending money that we receive?
Yes, there, that is something that the city is looking at to do. It is on our, our plan to provide that information on the website and including resources that property owners can use to remit those taxes. And hopefully we'll have that up to date in the coming months. We just haven't gotten to it quite yet.
Let me add a little bit to that because there seems to be a lot of que, or not a lot, but, but some questions about that. The hotel, the, the council, we reviewed the actual state law that governs the restrictions associated with hotel motel tax. As, as Lisa pointed out earlier, oh my goodness, there's a bunch of people out there, they're not paying any of this, we've had this on the books for a long time, et cetera. So the first thing we, I felt like that we needed to go do was identify what the rules were and how we, what we can and cannot go do with that money. And so the council on December 10th of last year, right, the last, one of the last meetings of the calendar year, we reviewed that and we came up with the concept of what we could potentially use that money for in Martin Dale. As you saw in his, those three buckets of, yeah, there you go. On that slide right there, it talked about tourism advertising, tourism programs that promote tourism, art programs that promote tourism and signage that promotes areas of interest to, to people, to tourists, okay? Those are the things in that long law that kind of, we, we think we could go do here in Martin Dale. Now, the, the specifics about when do we spend that first dollar, that stuff, on what project is not quite yet there. COVID stepped all over that. We were going to go wrap our arms around it on the 4th of July and try to go have a music festival between, that, that's supported by the, the restaurants around here. Highway 80 wanted to participate, these folks down here, just down Main Street wanted to participate, to try to bring in some groups that might make a art festival out of that and use some of that money for that kind of thing, to make a day of it on 4th of July, since that's already a big event about here. COVID stepped all over that we couldn't do. The next biggest piece that we do on a regular basis is the downtown lighting in December. And so that would be the next opportunity, but of course we're still all wearing masks and doing Zoom meetings, et cetera. And so if that doesn't, I mean, that one may get stepped on by COVID as well. But eventually I believe this is all gonna get, COVID's gonna go away and, and we're gonna be able to get back to normal. And the idea would be to do what's legal with that money, figure out how to use that. Once we've got that, then we will probably, my, I will be willing to progress on to identifying all those who should be paying hotel tax. Just like that court restricted that Jared waved his arms about and talked about, there's lots of rules associated with how you do that. And we actually have some money that's sitting in our bank accounts that we, that is restricted to be used on certain specific things that we do not have a use for right now. All we're doing is holding on to that and waiting for the time that we either get big enough or buildings change or whatever, that, that, that we can go off and go use that money for what it was intended for. So I don't want to get, I think, my personal opinion is, is that we don't want to get into that same kind of situation with hotel tax, collect a bunch of money that we don't know how to go spend. If we're not gonna spend it, in my opinion, we shouldn't be collecting. Now, we talked about it, we think we have, we think we have, just a second, just a second, we think we have a, have a plan in place now to work, how we would go off and go utilize those funds. And it would be good for the city, it would be good for the businesses, it would be good for the people that, that, that are trying to run these bed and breakfasts. So I'm all for continuing down that path. I don't want anybody to understand saying, hey, I don't want to do this. But we need to go make it work and understand how to go do it before we go jump on our horse and ride off in all directions. With that, Jan, go ahead and tell me. You're, you're up. Jan? Weren't you asking to get, break in?
No, I was just agreeing with you.
Oh.
I, I was.
Oh, is that Barry?
Yeah.
Okay, talk to us.
So why are we not doing something to beautify Martindale? We have done self-renewing houses one next door to yours, then looked abandoned. We got, if you go down on our street on one side of the road, it's either abandoned homes or homes with trashy backyards and side yards and ponds and swampous well. We got a beautifier in the front.
So the, the city, the beautification elements would not be able to be an, an available use for hotel taxes. Where the city would spend those funds would likely be in our attorney fees to prosecute those violations. And so that's, that's where having our proposed budget versus our proposed alternate is a big difference. And so if we want to have more efforts taken towards city beautification and prosecuting those, those violations of our city code, it's, it's well intentioned that we have participation to, to increase that, that revenue on the city, uh, property tax amount as we discussed previously, to adopt that higher rate.
So Jared, you could not do signs and hot nails, that beautiful hot nail and gilfer people there to make sure their doors look pretty, you know, instead of finding them, instead of, you know, negative?
I, the, the, yeah, the rules on the signs are related to directing visitors and tourists specifically to commonly visited attractions or tourist attractions. The thought being that if you had an attraction in the city that was advertised or had signage directing you to where to go, that that would increase hotel stays within the community. So while as a hotel tax use, beautify Martindale signs would not work, but that's something that could be considered as a general fund expense.
You don't have any money, Jared.
And if I may, if I may, um, try to get a little bit of this on, what to make us say to you, the, the progress, if we're really trying to get our arms stretched around what we're gonna do with the money. Um, I just want you for the record, state that it's in my opinion that we should be collecting the tax from the date that we put it on our book and said we were going to. So whether, whether this council for three or five or six council for the tax figured out how to actually use the money is irrelevant. What is relevant is that the only reason that there is money there in the first place is because some people have kind of took compliance.
And if the city would require every one to come in compliance, every one would come in compliance.
And what would, what do you think it would take, Barry? This Jan, don't give a chase in order to get everybody in compliance?
Fine, that's it. Give them 30 days notice and you give a fine.
Okay, I'm wondering, are, are, so get everybody a fine? Are you, is everybody gonna get a fine? Give a fine too?
Then you have a fine if people you know have bad questions that are not paying.
Then, then, how do you know that it's a bed breakfast?
All you do is go out with my Airbnb.
No, no, then are, even if you have a city, are, are you gonna have to hire somebody to go and sign it? Right, if we, if we?
So you're telling me somebody can't, at the city? I mean, I'll do it, but yeah, I mean, somebody can't go in the city and go on the Airbnb and DRDO? You know, bottom line is, is that, you know, it's easy, every city's doing. Every city to take your elevator way to do it, we can't do.
They do, and this is Lisa, I was just trying to hear, this is the exact thing that I've been talking about for four years. I'm actually, it's kind of fair to say how long I've been talking about it. Um, and proposing what I was calling a, um, a, um?
A roundup?
Roundup. I'm sorry.
A roundup.
Um, ba- basically a roundup, that counts without creating limits of other bed breakfasts that are in. And it, and just all for, for the record, it is not just inside the same limits, it is all from inside the ETJ. And I would make sure to say that there was fair amount of B and Bs in the ETJ that have no idea that they should be paying the tax to the city.
So, so I just want to make sure we're, we're focused in the discussion on, on the budget. If, if it's related to a budget item, um, we can discuss it, but if it's not on the, if it, if we're looking at policy, it's not on the agenda for tonight.
Well, collecting, collecting, the councils collecting inputs from citizens is fine on this, that's what this public hearing's for. So I have no problem with that, but we don't want to get too sidetracked here and talk about how to go, go do this, but we could put this on an agenda item sometime in the future. Any other questions about the budget?
I have a question though about the hotel tax. You have a marked increase, Sam Clinton, you have a very good high increase from one year to the next, from 4,000 to 14,000. How is that possible with a limited amount of Airbnbs that are actually in the program? How do we have such a high increase from one year to the next?
So the question was from Sam Clinton, how, what explains the increase from one year to the next in the hotel tax revenue? It's, it's just more compliance is what's driving that.
And, and new ones.
And new ones.
Exactly. The first ones turned their, their, their place in and they've, they've actually been paid since the beginning and a pretty good hefty one. Barry's got, got started, she's paying. The schoolhouse is paying and so, uh...
Talking about the city council meeting, help with compliance, help with, with beautification.
All right, speaking of education, am I on the stand, Booker?
Yeah.
Uh, are you here to encourage tourists? If we add on another 7% tax just for the, uh, for it, that comes here to Martindale, I think that's just encouraging tourists, if you have a, my opinion.
What did she say?
She thinks this tax discourages tourists. Okay.
I say as long as the money, as long as the revenue that is generated from the, that you include somebody, it doesn't have to be Barry, anybody that is a bed and breakfast owner that is paying taxes, just being as a voice on how this money is spent. I really, when we were talking about spending two and a half minutes on a Fourth of July fireworks, it did not do a thing for me. It does, you know, we need something long lasting. I doubt it.
Well, I mean, they already give us the schedule.
No, not tonight, not tonight. That's solved the problem. We're not here, we're running out of time, so. But Barry's point's well taken, and so when we get down to talking specifics, we'll be glad to try to go get the entire community involved. I think that's a great idea. Okay, anything else on the budget?
Can Jared just give us, Sam Clinton, then, are you gonna give us just a general overview of the budget based on the strategic 2025, or how you feel it is, or how we can make more money? I mean, what is your feeling, or not your philosophy, but as a city administrator, how could we make more money? Your budget's poor. I mean, do you have any just quick one or two minute say on this?
So the question from Sam Clinton is whether I, as a city administrator, have any say on how to, or recommendations on how to increase the budget. What's going to increase our budget is by having businesses thriving downtown. And so anything that the city can do to increase foot traffic and people visiting our businesses is positive. I think that the river is a great resource that people enjoy, and we should, I think, encourage people to enjoy the river. But while they're enjoying that river, provide a space, an opportunity for them to connect those markets. You know, how do we connect the park to the downtown in a way that's easy and convenient for people who might visit our park, but also shop downtown? Would that include a parking lot downtown where they can park at as an overflow for the park? And as they're walking back to their car, they get an ice cream from a shop downtown? Those are some of the things, but that takes a significant investment. And that's something that the city on its own can't really do. It can do things to encourage businesses, you know, through incentives and grants or other options, but it takes a lot of private investment to really turn it around. And I think that's what it's gonna take, and currently, I know that there's investment happening. You can see it downtown already. We have across the street here, a new grocery coming in. We've had a business cafe that's been, different owners, but sustained presence in downtown for a while now. There's the building across the street's being rebuilt and redesigned, and that will be a multi-use structure that includes living spaces and commercial spaces. So I think we're on the right track, we just haven't peaked yet, but I think that can come. And I think the ETJ agreement that was struck with San Marcos has a lot of potential. Not next year or two years, but, you know, 10, five, 10 years from now could have a significant impact on the financial standing of the city in terms of revenue that's collected through those property tax agreements that we made with the city. So those are the areas that we could. That's not a short-term solution. None of these are a short-term solution. It's a long protracted advancement and improving the business climate in the city, creating areas where people, you know, as more commerce come, more people come, when there's development opportunity, if it makes sense for the community based on our strategic plan, based on what was mentioned in the feedback, if that opportunity, development opportunity comes around, encourage it, support it, and help it succeed and thrive. But it doesn't mean you need to change your character or your town, unless that's something the residents want to do. I think you can still keep a quaint, close-knit town and still incorporate development, additional people, and larger commerce centers within the downtown area and all. But it's not overnight things. It'll take five, 10 years to get there.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right, that's, okay, Carl, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, thanks, Carl. The Good Things Rotary is gonna open next week, probably Wednesday or Thursday, downtown. There is another business that is likely to have entry in October, which news to come, that we got there is thriving. And I also think that the increasing numbers of bed breakfasts and other tour campaigns is a great addition to Martin Dale, making it tourist and so forth, as well as making it good for our residents and the city. But most of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the remaining members of the city council for, and our city administrator, Jared Ample, for presenting a, I just want to understand a bed that has been ever seen in Martin Dale before. And thank you, thank you to the mayor, the city council, and the staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, we will end the meeting with one exception. Before we do that, Sam earlier had a question of information, and I will do this. This is not for a discussion item, it is simply sharing information. Sam asked how Southeast River Road was paid for. If nobody's seen it, Southeast River Road between 1979 and Cemetery Road, which is the city portion, has recently been, I don't know if paving is the right word. Resurfaced, resurfaced is the right word, which was coal tacked plus being rolled over. The county did that, the county did that at no cost to us for, because we were going to allow them to utilize the triangle area for storage of their equipment, so they don't have to worry about where to put it as well. And when they get to working on the other end of the road, they may store materials there for a little while, as well as providing water. Now, they're in the process, in about a month, gonna go continue to work on the other end of Southeast River Road, which is purely county, between 1977, is that the Staples Road on the other end, and where the pavement ends here on Southeast River Road. They're gonna finish paving that whole thing. And to do that, they have to first go do some base work, which requires them to put some water on there. And so they needed a local access to water, instead of driving to Lou and their lock cars to go get the water and then bring the trucks back over here. They wanted to come to Martin Dale. And between, cooperation between us and the Martin Dale Water Department, Water Supply Company, we're gonna provide that for them. And so that's, it's not a cash thing, it's more like a barter system going on. But it was something that was very affordable for the city and helps the residents of the city that live down that road and those that are in our ETJ. Most of the people that use the road are in our ETJ and not necessarily inside the city limits. So that's the answer to your question, Sam.
Thank you very much.
It was an opportunity that came together in strong cooperation between them. The county, the city, and the water department made all that happen very affordably for everyone. So, thank you. All right, with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
And we have a second. At least a second's it, all in favor. That means you, Jan.
Aye.
All right, we have three others adjourned. Thank y'all for coming, I appreciate it. We got out of here in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye y'all.
Bye.
Good night.
Uh, say hi to some of the...
I will, I was, I left her a table in the backyard of the river, oh my, I'm sorry!
Which council member is coming?
Barry.
Barry. Oh, good.
All right, don't forget to spit out a list of everybody involved. This is Gary, I gotta stop, I don't know how to stop.
Goodbye.